Good evening, everyone. Today is March 9th. It is 6:30, and this is the Acushnet planning board. This meeting is being recorded for future YouTube viewing, and it's also live tonight on Zoom. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion to open the meeting. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have everybody in attendance tonight. Can we please have everybody introduce themselves?
Steve Boucher, member.
Dave Devickman, member.
Mark Prince, Y, chairman.
Brian DeChamp, member.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
All right. On February 9th meeting, Dave and Steve, did you guys have a chance to look over the minutes? Rick and Brian, you guys were absent that day.
Reading them now.
Take a quick.
February 9th, I'm good with.
That was, yeah.
You're here.
Yeah.
Sixty square foot lot. Kind of tiny.
Yep.
Who was another?
I missed that one. You got same issue one? We got an issue one. One, the other one, two, twenty-three.
Did you see that second circle? Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah. Thousand square foot, so sixty.
Yeah. There's also a misspelled, sorry, Zoom, sorry, Zoo.
Okay. Was that coming at the same minute?
February 9th.
February 9th?
Yes.
Okay. So, I missed that one. Okay.
Could be Zoom, sorry.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with two corrections that Paul can make before we sign them, which is the word Zoo instead of Zoom on top of page two, and the word sixty instead of sixty thousand on the last card on page two.
Okay. We have a motion with corrections. Do I get a second? They can, so you got a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. I will.
I don't have to look at the next one.
You don't have to look at the next one. All right. This is the meeting of, minutes in the meeting of February 23rd. Everybody was present except for Dave Devickman. You guys had a chance to look this one over?
I did. I believe this approximately three hundred square feet was four hundred and fifty-one square feet.
Where are you at?
Right on the, on the.
First page?
Yep. First page, down the bottom.
Was this three hundred square feet?
Yeah. It said, proposed plan will take, will takes that approximately three hundred square feet area and adds it to seven telly.
So you want the exact, which was four?
I think it was four fifty-one, I think, whatever the, whatever the number really was, that needs to be corrected.
We'll make the correction on that.
I think the three hundred and fifty square feet was part of something else, which was the, talking about land swap.
Right. Okay.
Which was practical.
So we'll get that number corrected? Anything else that anybody might see?
And as I think that where it says, building code is not acceptable, nonconforming, less conforming, I believe that is part of Mass General law, when they said building code.
Excuse me, say that again? Yeah. Where it says, nonconforming law, it's less conforming?
Yeah. Where it says, building code is not, it's Mass General law. I get it, forget the chapter is.
I get you. You good?
Better than that. I'm good.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes from February 23rd with the changes that need to be made?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll have those changes made. Okay. Nothing new for correspondence. There's no public hearing tonight. Discussions and other topics. We are going to continue the town planning, town planner staffing. The town administrator, Jamie Kelly, is here to kind of give us our second go around of his reasoning for the importance of a full-time planner. Ms. Keller?
All right. Before I get going, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Thompson. And Jen is the town's consultant on the use of our ARPA funds and our consultant to get through the Byzantine way that we have to acquire the funds and spend the funds because of the fact we have one, one set of funds comes from the state and the other comes through the county. And you, different funds you can only use for certain things, and you have to use it by a certain date. In addition, Jen is a former town administrator. She is an expert in public administration, finance, and grant management. She's the, a partner and the chief development officer in a firm called Capital Strategic Solutions. And a friend of mine. And she was willing to come here to answer questions, because I think, especially for the fact that she was involved in a community that had a lot of different type of development, along the 495 corridor. And it is the hometown of the local casino. And so she's seen a lot of different things, right next to Foxborough, North Attleboro, et cetera, Rentham, so all the different types of development. But she also knows the landscape on grant writing and how to acquire grants and the grant management from the state that I am not an expert in. And so I want to thank Jen for being here. And she'll answer questions that you probably have that I couldn't answer, because the planning budget's one of the few budgets that's still open. The selectmen are looking for the planning board to give them some input as far as what you would want and need for your staff person. I think the town planner just generally is not just a processor of applications anymore. Site plan reviews, subdivision plans, ANRs are not coming in like they came in ten and twenty years ago. Town planner is really a professional who develops not only planning documents that are mandated by the state and the feds, but a lot of the documentation and the data that's needed to apply for additional funds, to spend already collected funds and to spend already, already funds gained from grants. A little background. Town revenue, sixty-three percent of it comes from taxes. Eleven percent of it comes from local receipts. That's fees. Twenty-five percent comes from state aid. Of that twenty-five percent, twenty percent of the twenty-five is school aid and only five percent is aid for the town. In the last so many years, the town state aid has increased fifty-six thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand, and thirty-five thousand year to year. That's between two and two and a half percent. Chapter ninety, which is the money you get from the state to take care of your roads, has been level funded for the last eleven years. It's lost two-thirds of its purchasing power over the last eleven years. The way the state and the federal government have set up the game, the only source of additional funds are grants. And the grant programs from the state are Mass Works, which deals with infrastructure, community planning grants, grants for underutilized properties, Mass Downtown initiatives, and then you have the federal economic development grants. If you don't have a professional who can not only put the data together in the applications, but know how to write the applications, you're not going to get the money. And the way local aid is, and the aid for like chapter ninety and stuff like that, if the town budget increases the way it has, and the mandates of what you have to spend for education, without grants, the town side of the budget is just going to keep decreasing and decreasing. Because the only other way would be if you wanted to increase taxes, and you'd have to do that through an override, because right now you're already at the two and a half limit. So financially, if the town side wants to survive, you've got to, and do something about your infrastructure. You have to do it through grants. Because the money's not coming in any other way. I mean, forty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand increase in state aid for the town side a year doesn't buy much.
No, it's not much.
Jen, do you want to jump in?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me, and I hope I'll be helpful in your discussion. I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you might have. Just to add on to what, you know, Jamie said, I think sometimes when folks look at a town planner, they think exclusively about, you know, economic development or commercial development, which is not necessarily the case. So I think in addition to providing support to you as a board, and, you know, perhaps to, you know, I don't know your complete structure, but, you know, a lot of times they provide support to zoning as well. The grant piece of it really does come into play if you have a really talented and professional town planner. So I think from what I can tell, when we were looking at grants for you for some of your infrastructure, that there's some strategic plans that need to be updated in the town for you to be eligible for some of the state and federal grants. So I think your master plan, perhaps your open space and rep plan, unless it's there and I didn't see it, those are, you know, important documents that if you want to be eligible for funding, you'll want updated. And I think a town planner, certainly that would be a huge priority if you were to move forward with hiring a town planner. And there's a lot of other things, so just some examples. Maybe you're not overly concerned about housing, but some communities are concerned about affordable housing for their seniors. That's, you know, strategic planning that a town planner can assist with and perhaps get grant funding through the state or federal government forth, if that's something that, you know, a community is looking for. Certainly, you know, green and sustainable energy and those types of things, there's money available if that's something Acushnet wanted to look at. I think you probably need an ADA plan to be updated from what I can tell, which would make you eligible for grants if you want to improve sidewalks and crosswalks to make them handicapped accessible or public buildings. So, you know, I could give you a whole list. There's a, there's a lot of them that I think your planner could be engaged in if you hired a professional planner to kind of really work with the board and work with the town administrator on strategic planning for the town as a whole. You know, another big one obviously is open space and recreation for your residents, trails. I know you have the river, and there's just a lot of options there that I think go beyond just economic development. I did, just out of curiosity, look at other communities that are the same size as your population wise. I just looked at, you know, the twenty that are closest to you, the ten higher than your population and the ten lower. I was just curious if they have town planners and all but one of them do. You know, I could send you the list. They kind of run the gamut. Some of them I would say are similar to Acushnet in terms of your makeup, but some are. So, you know, that's something to consider too. They, they're likely doing that because, for a number of reasons. You know, they want to make sure that they're staying on top of strategic planning and also making themselves eligible for funding. So that's it. That's, that's all I'll say.
That's good. First of all, let me just thank you for being here tonight. I really appreciate it. One question that I have is, and I'm relatively new to the board, but when you're talking grants and you're talking funding, not exact numbers, but what kind of dollars are we talking about? Are we, are we talking hundreds? Are we talking thousands? What are we talking as far as what's potentially available?
So, I think now more than ever, there's more available. But I would say, in particular for Acushnet, you know, you have a lot of work that needs to be done on your infrastructure, particularly your waters, your water and roads. So some of the projects that we looked at might be eligible for a Mass Works grant. Those can, you know, those are several million dollars. There's some federal infrastructure grants that are coming through the infrastructure bill that you'll likely get eligible for. You also have your state reps and looking at some earmarks for you for some of those to kind of match the federal funds. So I think you need someone, you know, there that can kind of, you know, make sure that all of those different avenues are being looked at, to make sure you're maximizing that funding. Because I, I think you're talking about, in some cases, millions of dollars of funding that could come in at Acushnet. Now, there's smaller ones too. So that ADA grant, for example, the state will give you two hundred and fifty thousand just to do your plan, and then every year you can apply for, you know, up to five hundred thousand to do ADA improvements. And then there's some smaller grants that are, you know, sixty thousand, a hundred thousand. Someone that's looking at it holistically, that money can really start to add up and make a big difference in a community.
I agree.
I mean, it would be interesting to see a, a list of available grants. And then I would, I would need the town highway superintendent, the water department to weigh in on what things they would be interested of those grants. It's, it's a big question, and, you know, to, to come up with a recommendation for a person is tough without some specific, you know, grants that would, that our town departments would recognize as being valuable to get to further their jobs. Without something more specific, I mean, it's, it's hard to go to town meeting and tell everybody that they've got to come up with double or triple amount of money that we've, we've had allocated in the past to come up with this professional.
That, I completely get it, yeah.
That's, that's one part that, you know, again, ultimately, it's got to be sold at town meeting.
Yep.
And there have to be specific things that, that we can approach the, the town meeting members with. Here's why, I mean, here's, here are grants that we could use. You know, we've gone over with the highway department, we've gone over with the water department, the border health, whoever it might be. And, and they would like to secure some of this money. Then, then we would, I would need to know, well, how, you know, if we've got two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars in pre-work, was it master plan updates and open space plan updates that have to be done before we're even, would even be considered, you know, for the grants? Well, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that this high-paid grants writer is going to do us any good right away. If we've got six months or nine months of work to get these plans updated and a substantial amount of money to, you know, to develop those. If there are grants available to the town to do those things, then, again, that's something that, you know, I think we need to have in hand to tell town meeting members why we need this money, you know, for, for this high-paid, high-dollar individual.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, I just want to say one other thing, Mark. Unfortunately, this, and this is not just unique to a town planner, but even in business, if you're one of the people that helps keep things going, but you're not specifically, you can't specifically show how much money you're making the place, like a, oh, a safety, a safety overseer. I mean, there's a classic one. If you've got to put somebody on the payroll to make sure you comply with OSHA safety requirements and all that, he's a non-revenue-producing person, and he's got a difficult job to, to keep. He's in the firing range. And when he comes up with, with proposals that are going to cost the company more money to implement, well, maybe he doesn't have a job anymore, right? You know, it's, it's a, and I think the planner is one of those kinds of positions. And I, I for one would feel much more comfortable if I had specific goals and at least some approximate costs of why it's advantageous to have somebody in the budget this year to, you know, to do those things. I mean, again, when I've heard numbers thrown around for master plan and open space plan, and you just threw around, around a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number for an ADA plan, I mean, before we're eligible for grants, well, then, you know, we got to come up with those things and we've got to put those things in place first.
But you can get grants for those if you have someone who can write the grants.
I, I, and again, I'm not, I'm trying to envision how to sell this at town meeting. You know, and without, you know, an A, B, C, D, E, F explanation of why it's necessary, it's difficult to get that across to the people on the floor.
Okay.
I'm not arguing. I'm just, I'm just searching for a mechanism, I guess, to, to sell it at town meeting floor.
Well, that's what I was going to say.
So, oh, go ahead.
Please, please, go ahead.
So, I definitely don't think you're arguing, so don't worry about that. I have no dog in this fight, so it doesn't, you know, I'm, I'm just here to help you or answer questions if I can, so don't worry about that. You can ask me anything or say anything, it won't bother me. So I absolutely agree with you, because I think, you know, when you go to town meeting and this is something that you're interested in, you really want to show the cost benefit of it, right? I mean, this is an investment that the taxpayers would have to make in the position, and they want to know that it's worth something to them. What is it going to do for Acushnet? So I certainly think it would be worth listing out all the, the grant, you know, grant opportunities that you'd be eligible for. Happy to do that for you.
That'd be great.
We did it recently for some road work and water work that you need, but they were very specific. The grants were very specific to that project, but I can do it more holistically if you want, you know, for the town as a whole. So I'm happy to help with that. If that's something you want for town meeting, I'll send it to you. And then the other thing I would mention is if you've had a town planner, I do think there are resources through your regional planning commission that you might be able to take advantage of too, where they would come in and provide some of that assistance with some of those plans that need updating, and you would, you would need the town planner to kind of coordinate that. I'm sure Jamie tries to do that, but, you know, Jamie's also probably, I'm assuming you're HR director and maybe you're finance director and you're procurement director. So if you have someone dedicated that can work with Serpide on some of those planning things, that, that might be helpful as well. But I'm happy to help if you want.
Yeah, I mean, on, on the town meeting floor, it has to be put across in a very simple, straightforward manner, or you just, you, you lose everybody.
I agree.
And, you know, and it's going to cost us X amount of dollars to, or approximately to develop these plans so that we're eligible for grants. There are grants available to help with these things. You know, what are they? How much, you know, how much is available? And what kind of effort needs to be put in to, to get them?
Yep.
And so now we've, we've spent the year trying to get all these things in place so that then we have the ability to apply for some of these grants that are worth X amount of dollars. It's, it's got to be a simple argument like that, or it'll never fly on town meeting floor. Especially if it's got any kind of, you know, there are, there are groups that oppose anything that's going to cost more, you know, you, it has to be very compelling and very simple so that the entire floor understands what you're trying to do.
I, we.
And, and a planner, a town planner could help with that.
I know, that's true.
I, I, that's a, I understand.
I did want to mention one other thing that you, you also mentioned, which I think is important. So you mentioned those other departments, you know, like highway and water. I think that's critical to having a town planner too. So if you hire a really good town planner, they're going to work well and strategically with those departments, which is very important. So I know your infrastructure is very aged. I think you have, you know, pipes and roads and sidewalks and all kinds of things that will need replacing. So you want someone who can work strategically with your highway and water department. And then the other thing I would mention is if you've had a town planner, I do think there are resources through your regional planning commission that you might be able to take advantage of too, where they would come in and provide some of that assistance with some of those plans that need updating. And you would, you would need the town planner to kind of coordinate that. I'm sure Jamie tries to do that, but you know, Jamie's also probably, I'm assuming you're HR director and maybe you're finance director and you're procurement director. So if you have someone dedicated that can work with Serpide on some of those planning things, that, that might be helpful as well. But I'm happy to help if you want.
Yeah, I mean, on, on the town meeting floor, it has to be put across in a very simple, straightforward manner or you just, you, you lose everybody.
I agree.
And, you know, and it's going to cost us X amount of dollars to, or approximately to develop these plans so that we're eligible for grants. There are grants available to help with these things. You know, what are they? How much, you know, how much is available? And what kind of effort needs to be put in to, to get them?
Yep.
And so now we've, we've spent the year trying to get all these things in place so that then we have the ability to apply for some of these grants that are worth X amount of dollars. It's, it's got to be a simple argument like that or it'll never fly on town meeting floor. Especially if it's got any kind of, you know, there are, there are groups that oppose anything that's going to cost more. You know, you, it has to be very compelling and very simple so that the entire floor understands what you're trying to do.
I, we.
And, and a planner, a town planner could help with that.
I know, that's true.
I, I, that's a, I understand.
Yeah, I did want to mention one other thing that you, you also mentioned, which I think is important. So you mentioned those other departments, you know, like highway and water. I think that's critical to having a town planner too. So if you hire a really good town planner, they're going to work well and strategically with those departments, which is very important. So I know your infrastructure is very aged. I think you have, you know, pipes and roads and sidewalks and all kinds of things that will need replacing. So you want someone who can work strategically with your highway and water departments to, to plan those out and, you know, plan all of that. And sometimes, you know, if you have a really good planner, public safety finds them very helpful and useful too. It's a position that really should be collaborating with, you know, your fire chief, your police chief, if other works folks. So that was a really important point that you made as well.
Well, I mean, that, that may be another part of the process is, besides educating us, educate the police chiefs, the fire chief, you know, and, and those people, what the advantages are to, to having the planner because then we can go after these funds that will help you out in your day-to-day job.
Yeah, yeah, they really, I mean, they, they become a resource for your core departments, you know, the ones that are providing that frontline service to your resident. You know, an effective planner becomes a resource for, for the, you know, like I said, the chiefs here, you know, water superintendent, highway superintendent, whatever your structure happens to be. That's a good point.
Question related to the grants.
Please.
Thank you for, for being here, Jennifer.
Sure.
When it comes to grants, okay, I know there's matching grants and I know there's, you know, fully funded grants. Where, where are we, you know, are you talking millions of dollars in, in grants? Do we have to pony up millions of dollars for, for these? You know, there's, there's two sides of getting a, you know, how I look at the grant. I mean, the town doesn't even have the funds to match the grant. We're going to be, I just trying to get some clarity around this. And I'm not opposed to grants, but I know there's a lot of strings attached and they sound, they, they put them out there and all of a sudden you say, you need matching grants to get this, you need matching funds. Then where we got, then we got to strike it up.
Or you need to fund the whole project and then we'll look at what you did and decide how much of it is eligible for that $50,000 or $100,000 grant or whatever it is we said we'd give you. I, you know, I, I understand, I understand that. It's a huge area.
Yeah.
And I, I'm a little bit at a loss of how to make the pitch at town meeting, you know, to, to get somebody in there that's good enough that can, you know, do these things, write the grants, grants that are, that the rest of our town departments recognize would be good for the water system. That would be good for the road system. That would, you know, provide some funding for, you know, the police equipment, for fire department equipment.
You're basically pitching it the way it should be pitched.
Well, yeah, but I don't know all the, I don't know any of the facts. That's the problem.
Well, that's what Jennifer's here for. She's volunteered, hold on, she's going to answer your question first, but she's volunteered to give us a list or somewhat of a list of possible grants that are out there. Right there is a, is a good starting point to say, you know, when you're in front of town meeting, you say, look, this is, we're eligible for this. We're eligible, and then you go kind of down the list in a very simplistic way. You don't want to get too complicated. But now to kind of get back to Steven, Steven's question, how many of those grants are matching? And, and you have to, you know, all the strings that are attached to some of these grants. Are they as complicated as that or are they much easier?
So, so it's a mix and I agree with you. I think there are some grants that require too much of a match that I would tell you, don't even bother going for it because it's going to end up costing the town too much to match it. And I've done that in the past. There's been opportunities that, you know, we get, you know, when you're running a town, you get grants sent to you all the time and opportunities and, you know, your legislators will send them to you. And then you look a little deeper into them and you say, this is, it requires like a 50% match. Where are we going to get, you know, another million dollars from? So it's great to say you're going to give us a million, but then we have to match a million. So I think there are grants like that that I would tell you not to even go for if you're not in the financial position to do it, which most towns of your size aren't, you know, just like the town that I ran wasn't. But there are some grants, especially in terms of infrastructure, that are not requiring a match, a match. And some of that is new. I mean, some of that has really changed because of, you know, the pandemic funding and the infrastructure funding. So some of them are 100% grants. You're not, it's not requiring a match. Some of them, the match is small or you can match it with some of your opera funds if you want to be strategic about how you're matching grants. There's certain ones that you can use your opera funds for if you haven't already used them. Some of it you can, some grants you can match with in-kind services. So if you have a town planner and they'll say you have to match it with town planner hours, that can count as your match. So it doesn't actually cost you anything. It's that they dedicate so many hours to the actual project. And then we're seeing more of the grants not having to be shovel-ready. So in the past, you know, they, they wouldn't pay for design. So that's another thing. It's like, okay, well, you'll give us $2 million, but we have to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on design. Where are we going to get that money from? And some of the newer funding is covering design, which is, is a bit good. But there are some that the match is too high and I would tell you, don't bother going for it.
So if I may, another question is, having a proficient grant writer, how many hours is spent by that individual writing those grants? On an average, I mean, again, I mean, we've got a small town. I think what we'd be going for is probably a lot less than, you know, a major city. But I, I think it's, that's basically, I mean, where's it going to take?
There's two aspects to that.
Okay.
One is the actual grant writing and all of that. The other is most grants ask for a bunch of backup in data. And so you have to have someone who's going to be collecting, analyzing and packaging that data to attach it to the grant. And just a quick answer on something else that you can use for matching funds. You can use CPC funds as long as it hits that category of the CPC, whether it's historic or whether it's open space. And you could use the CPC funds especially for design work. And remember, last year I was able to get earmarks and CPC funds reserved and they're still there and available to help with the updating of the master plan and the open space plan and the transportation plan. So there's money sitting there too, to, to frame those costs.
I mean, things like that are, are great at town meeting. We have X amount of funds available, but in order to access them, we, we've got to have a number of things in place. And it's going to take an individual to, to do that. And more than just, just somebody out of school or somebody like me that doesn't even know all the different sources of the funds. It's, yeah, I don't know. I, I'm too, I'm too ignorant to come up with a, with an argument for it at this point.
What it takes, what it actually takes to write a grant. You know, how many hours, how many man-hours does it take to write a grant?
Yeah, it, it depends on the grant. So, you know, something like a Mass Works grant, it probably, you know, will take a considerable amount of time for a few weeks while you're getting ready for the grant. So I would say probably if you had a town planner, you know, half their time for a month or two is going to be spent just on that particular grant. Some of the federal grants are more complicated and take a little more time. So if we found, you know, a federal grant that you'd be eligible for and it was millions of dollars, I think, like Jamie said, there's a lot of data that has to go with that, so that would take several hours. And then there's some smaller grants at the state level that, you know, are not that difficult. It's a few hours of work and it's a few sheets that you have to fill out. And, and again, this reporting and there's all kinds of things that go along with it. But it, it kind of depends on the grant.
I mean, a list.
But it's enough to, enough to keep someone busy, I think, in addition to all the other, you know, I think grants is not the only thing your town planner would be doing, but it would take up quite a bit of their time.
And beyond the application, then you have grant administration that you have to keep issuing reports and telling the people who gave you the money what you're doing with it, filing quarterly reports, et cetera, where you are in the project that you told them you were going to spend the money on.
Right.
Jen, I don't, I think there's a little confusion here, first off, just from everybody. My understanding, I don't think anybody's opposed to a town planner.
No.
The question we've debated is whether this town needs a full-time planner or a part-time planner. And, you know, we both, we're talking professional, whether it's a professional, part-time, maybe somebody that's a senior type, retired, you know, that can do the job and whatnot. Jamie, you brought up something called an economic director, which I still don't know what that means, but we'll take that and put it aside. My question to you is, any professional town planner, whether it's part-time or full-time, can they write the, can they take our master plan, which is outdated? And can they handle updating it to a new plan? Instead of us spending $100,000 on doing that with some high-end firm and just seems like crazy money to me since all the data's already there? Some of the stuff's already been done in the master plan, some of it's just updating. To me, to me, it's like a paperwork shuffle. I might be, you know, short-selling it, but can somebody we hire update the master plan, the open space plan, all the plans that need to be done as their day-to-day activities? That's to me how we sell it to town meeting.
It's one way, you know, again, there's, there's got to be.
They need to update the plans in order to make us eligible to go get the grants and their job is to get the grants once we update the master plan. Can that be done?
And we've got X amount of money that's potentially available with grants if we have somebody to pursue it, you know, and we, the, the water department, the highway department, police chief, the fire chief, and hopefully the, the board of selectmen would agree that these things will be valuable to the town. It will ultimately save the town money in the long run if we have somebody to pursue these things. I mean, that's a, that to me is the argument.
So Jen, in your professional opinion, in your professional opinion, to back to what David's question was, do you think a part-time planner of approximately 19 hours can do the day-to-day business of A&amp;R plans, subdivision plans, town meetings, and also take the time to start or write a master plan, open space plan, recreation plan and grants? And all the research and everything that goes behind that? Can a huge, can a town, part-time town planner have enough time in a month to do all that?
No. That's my easy answer for you.
Yeah, but you're talking about the amount of things that they say.
Let's get my, let's get my question answered first. You bypassed me, you ran me over, I'm sorry.
All right, sorry.
Right, but my point is, I don't want to ask somebody at what we're talking about and they can't even write the master plan. To me, it's what is the point? Now they're going to, what they're going to do is they're going to help us go hire a firm for the town to cough up $125,000 to get a master plan done and open space plan, everything that our prior, prior plan was talking about, right? He lumped them all together and I remember him telling me some number of $125,000. Why, to me, how could I, in good conscience, go to town meeting and say, we're going to hire a town planner, but oh, by the way, he's going to orchestrate and get us to that point where we can go hire three firms or one firm to go spend another $125,000? It's like, that person has to do those plans. That's how I view it. Can that person, can we hire the person to be able to do those plans? Because to me, it pays for itself.
I agree. I think that's the difference between a part-time and a full-time planner. Yeah.
And a qualified planner.
A qualified planner, yes.
I agree with you. I, I mean, if you hire a full-time planner, I think that, that's part of their, that's part of their job responsibility and probably, I would assume, that, you know, the number one priority when they come in is to, to work on the master plan. I mean, I don't, I don't know that for sure, but from what I can tell, I think your master plan is kind of old. But Jamie can correct me, I only looked real quickly.
It's out of date.
Yeah. I think, I think that's, that's the difference between a part-time and a full-time. A full-time is going to be expected to, to handle that for you. Now, they may need some additional resources from your regional planning commission. You pay dues for that, there's free hours that you get. I think there's, you know, resources you could get through Serpide to assist them, but I agree with you. I don't think you need to go out and hire a big firm and pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to do your master plan.
If you were, if you're doing the transportation part, you might need a traffic consultant to come in.
Yeah, they're little pieces. Might have to spend $5,000 here or whatever. I, I get that.
The, if you hire a professional, I would say, just from my experience, and then Jen can talk about her experience, I would expect two-thirds of their time would be spent on that.
I agree.
But once, but once that's done, you were talking two-thirds of planning, Mark just said a month. I mean, this whole thing is, this is going, how long is this going to take to get done?
Probably considering how many plans here are out of date and how many haven't been done at all, you're looking probably a two- to three-year enterprise. You've got master plan, you've got open space recreation plan, you've got transportation plan, you've got an economic development plan. You've got, you've got, thank God, you've got the sewer plan. Your water pipes are over 100 years old and you're going to have to look at that. You've got all sorts of issues with your roadways right now. And as I said, Chapter 90 is flat. And the other issue that you've got, you've got two elephants coming into the room. One is you're going to be an MBTA-adjacent community within two years. And aside from the money they're going to charge you just for geographically being within spinning distance of train tracks, you're going to have to be providing data and information to them.
And Jamie, do you have to do zoning, will you have to do zoning changes?
Yes.
Will you, will you fall into that?
Yes.
We have to create zoning changes that would allow for higher density.
Yep.
And this town's so backwards, they just made somebody go away that wanted to do it.
But you've got to take the first step. Now, if you don't have a full-time planner, I've been looking for a retiree, I can't find one. So I don't know if there's an opportunity for hiring a part-time planner, but I think you've got the work for a full-time planner for the next five years. And that's anticipating having the lack of real building going on and site plan that was the case 20 years ago in a lot of towns. And I don't know what's going to happen with how attractive South Coast gets because of the train. It's usually a five- or a 10-year lapse before you're discovered, once you have the train in place.
I think it's less than that. They're already, Florida's already been discovered. It's just, that's, I think it's less than that.
Yeah, you said that rents are right.
Yeah, but I mean, like the Attleboro's were, or like some of the communities that were serviced that are closer to Worcester versus Framingham and Nadek's and stuff like that. And then the North Shore going up towards Fitchburg. All of those were about a five-year lapse and then all of a sudden, the young people who couldn't afford the Dedham and the W Communities, you know, Wellesley, Weston, et cetera, started to move out along the train lines because they were still commuting. Who knows if people will even commute anymore? A lot of people haven't returned to work and if that's the case, South Coast is going to be a target because you've got the ocean and you've got a housing stock that is not as expensive as housing stock closer to 128, 495 bill.
What, what triggers the town being charged for being close to the train? What triggers that? When is the town going to, how does the town get a bill for that? I guess, in simple terms.
It's an assessment.
And when does that assessment happen?
They said, within, I believe it's a year, beyond that fiscal year's billing cycle, when the stock actually start to roll on. beyond that fiscal year's billing cycle, when the stock actually starts to roll on the rails.
Is there a-
So it'd probably be eighteen months after, you get your assessment, eighteen months after, the stock actually starts to roll on the rail.
But again, I mean, what's it, you know, how's it gonna impact us? I mean, it's there, we're only a community of, we only have so much open space left.
No, no, this is the assessment I'm talking about.
Right, but I, I get you, but I think it's all, what I'm getting at is, you know, we go, we get a population of, what, ten thousand five hundred, right around that number? I mean, how mu, how does that assessment come through? I mean, it's, if we put, we bring in more housing, I know there's gonna be some requirements, but is it gonna offset any of, any of these costs?
The housing-
Or we're gonna create more?
The housing is separate from the assessment. The assessment is just because geographically you're close to the rails. And what they do is, they put it in a formula, and they take it off your local aid. Just like they would do for the mosquito control board, the school choice. They just, they say, "Here's the money the state's gonna give you, and here's your list of assessments that we're taking away from that money."
Now, where does, where does the zoning, where do the zoning changes come into that? How, how are those, quote, mandated or required?
That was required separately by the last administration. And it's statutory.
And, and when, what is the deadline for the town implementing these, quote, zoning changes?
They haven't, they haven't thrown you into the list yet.
With this, with this position, would it have to be union?
The position is, is in the union list now. It, the, union's been certified by the state. We will go into bargaining, and then all of that could be decided during bargaining, 'cause this is a brand of a union.
My concern is, once you create the position, three years from now, we don't need it, or it's not working out, and we can never get rid of it.
No, that's not true. I've defunded a number of positions that were union positions. And they stay on the books, but they're not funded.
Well, I can tell you that. I've been on the Board of Health for seventeen years, or ATN, I lost track of time. When I first got on, we had two full-time secretaries. And I think at a time that we might have needed it. I was five years into it, and I was chairman at the time, and I'm calling town administrator and saying, "What, what do we got? We don't need two full-time secretaries, and we can get rid of one, because of the union."
No, that's because you didn't have, you didn't have a town administrator that knew what they were doing.
It's a shame, 'cause all these years, just one person doing the work, one really not needed, could be used somewhere else. I mean, I scratch my head, I'm like, oh, I've got excess people there.
I not only taught from experience of being a town administrator, but also the experience where I was chair for, or vice-chair for fifteen years of the state labor board, and we never upheld a defunding of, a position appeal.
Do we have any more questions for Jennifer?
Oh, I mean, I will look forward to seeing the list of potential grants.
That would be great.
And the prerequisites for them. I mean, that's the beginning of trying to make an argument.
Right, I agree.
I agree, that the steps are, you go to the podium and you say, "Look, well, one thing that I wanted to ask is, when you add what we had budgeted for the full-time planner, and, you know, which you'll never find anybody who would qualify, and I might say-"
What, seventy-five?
No, I'm fifty-three.
Oh, fifty-three, yeah.
Doug's salary.
Fifty-three.
But now, Paul is, I understand, leaving us, retiring? When you put the two together, isn't that what our budget is, more or less?
If you, if-
In other words, do we, do we need to have a clerk?
Yes.
For somebody to stay full-time?
That's, that's not my decision.
I'm, I'm just at the position that-
That's your position.
If we don't have a whole bunch of plans and site plans, everything coming, rolling through, what are, what's the clerk doing? You know, do we really need a clerk at nineteen, twenty hours a week?
That would be a discussion you should have before-
I'm in favor of keeping, you know, of merging the two to help pay for a professional.
That's a-
It's an easy sell, you do that.
That's a discussion for this board to have.
In my opinion, and I mean, we're actually talking about twenty-seven thousand dollars. It's not, we're not doubling the pay, we're not tripling the pay. The pay is fifty-three thousand right now, we're asking to go to seventy-five, which is twenty-seven-
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand seven, thank you, sorry. It's not a crazy amount of money. One, just, and I'm kind of put back, 'cause I didn't realize some of these grants were in the millions, but even if you were to get one at sixty-five grand a year, or one at a hundred grand a year, that would pay for his bump ten, ten years down the line. It's very, it's a very small amount, I think, that we're asking, or that I think we're putting in towards the town planning.
Last year, just myself talking, and part of my background is because I was, years ago, on the staff of one speaker, two governors, so I understand the state system, just by talking and having conversations with your state reps, future state reps, because they weren't here yet. We ended up with fifty thousand dollars in money that we can use to write part of the master plan. It can't be used for salary, but it can be used for those, you know, the traffic study or whatever. And that's, if you have someone who knows how to work the serpent lines, how to work the state rep lines, you get those earmarks, you get to fill in. And a good town administrator and a good planner should be able to find you fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in earmarks every year.
So what's our budget now? Do you know what our line item for our total budget is?
What's the, what's the clerk plus the-
Yes.
Yeah. What's the clerk budget?
Do we have it now? Do we have the seventy-five now?
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget for it, and I was here last night in front of FinCom, kind of pitching it, and with Jamie, and we told them the budget with the extra money, and they didn't vote on anything, but I didn't get any opposition, I actually got them in favor of.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, you know, you put this, that's our budget. And you think we can really hire somebody, a professional for that number?
Yeah.
Seventy-five thousand, you, you will hire someone who probably has three to four years' experience and a degree, and has been working as an assistant planner in, like, the city of New Bedford or something like that.
I think, I think as green and as young as Doug was, but he was enthusiastic, he was, he wanted, he had the vision to go after those grants. I think if we had Doug today at that cost, we would be where we'd wanna be.
But I mean, there's, you know, besides the seventy-five thousand, we've got, you're going to full-time, they've got full benefits, what does that, what does that full benefit save you? Gets a family plan?
Doug had all that.
Doug had it, Doug had it. No, yeah, but what I'm getting at, we got seventy-five thousand dollars in our budget, does that include all of that?
No, that would be, the health insurance is a separate-
Right, pensions and self, health insurance are separate numbers.
But that's budgeted separately, that's a joint account. And I'm endeavoring right now to get you out of the mess you're in in health insurance, and get you into a group. And when you're in a group, it passes off any expense as far as the major expense, which you're eating now among a group of forty or fifty towns.
So what's the danger of ramping this position up? You hire a part-timer, he comes in, starts to, or her comes in to get everything in order, and says, "This is what we need to go after, okay, but I need more time," you know? Rather than coming in right off the shoot, hiring a full-timer, and hoping that individual has the experience he says he has when you hire him, that's always, that's always the danger of everything, you know? With that kind of salary, and what's that? Person's got three or four years, if you let me finish, got three or four years' experience, okay, you hire him at seventy-five grand, two years down the road, he says, "Hey, I want more money." But we keep going, where, where are we at with this whole, again? What's the danger of ramping it up from a part-timer? Say, next year, if he says he's got enough in front of him, that we can go to town meeting and say, "Let him as a planner present, and as a board, present what he's gonna-"
But you're assuming that part-timer wants to become full-time. You're assuming we're hiring somebody at a part-time job that might be semi-retired, that wants to stay part-time. We get to the point where we're like, "He doesn't have enough time, we need a full-time." We're gonna fire him, will we get a full-time?
I can't find part-time right now.
Well, I'll say this, if we have seventy-five in the budget, I'm in favor of combining, using the whole thing for a professional planner. And then, hey, if that person is generating so much paperwork that needs clerical help, that'll be upon the selectmen to get the help, whether that's shifting somebody else to help that person. So in other words, eliminate the clerk, go with the full-time planner, and, and run with it, and see where it goes.
Can, union-wise, can that be done? Union-wise, can we eliminate, can we eliminate one, combine the two?
Yeah, that can be done, and you also-
Then we're really not increasing our budget at the moment.
Well, yeah.
And there's no sell-in, town meeting.
You also, you also, you also have a fall town meeting that if you find out that you're inundated with paper, then you can look to that. And usually, you, the figures I'm using for local aid right now are the governor's figures. And the governor increases education figures year to year. And he lets, or she, the legislature increase the town local aid year to year in the final budgets. So usually, there's somewhere between seventy-five to a hundred and fifty increase in aid coming in between the governor's budget and then when the legislature's finished. And the legislature always passes their budget after town meeting, so you'd have to appropriate that money in the fall. And if you found out that the clerical, or you needed a clerical person in the fall, you could make your case for it.
But you know you're down from seventy-five down to seventy, now you're trying to find a professional at seventy.
Now, you'd have to-
I thought we had the seventy-five.
Oh, you want seventy-five and twenty.
No.
No, he wants to-
I'm saying merge Doug's salary with Paul's salary, since Paul's retired.
Right.
He's saying defund the clerical position.
Right.
And fund the planner position at seventy-five.
Yeah. But what, what does that do for the planner? Does it now, how much clerical work? I mean, Paul spends some time up there right now, doing stuff, so you're talking about taking a clerk, okay, a clerk's position, okay, doing meeting minutes and so on and so forth, without taking the planner at the higher rate to do the clerical work? So I just, that's kind of, you know, I, now, what are you doing? You're taking away from his writing abilities, you're taking away from his other duties by not having, him not having a clerk. So I think that's, that's part, that's part of it.
Or you could fund, we were going to decrease the funding of the clerical position from twenty to seventeen, because Paul had asked for less hours. Maybe you fund the full-time planner, and you have ten hours of clerical help time in the planning budget, and someone who, we have a part-time person in the, but eligible for benefits in the building inspector's office at twenty-six, twenty-five or twenty-six hours. Well, if you added ten hours to that, then you got a full-time person. No additional benefits, and you have the clerical help you might need for the ten hours.
I see your point, but I don't think there's that much clerical, that's my point. And if it's like eight or ten hours, you know, every two weeks or- Again, it's, I, I look at it- I look at it as filling the holes of the dead time that the person has. Because I don't think there really is. I mean, I believe it's- And find, and find a planner that's not gonna want to-
Before we get to, let me say, I'm, I'm really, I'm really pushing-
Yeah, that's what I was about to say, thank you. Does anybody have any more questions?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jen, you have to listen to us ramble, thank you, tangent off.
Does anybody have any more questions for Jennifer?
I'm very intrigued, by the way, you were talking about, 'cause I, I've been through the whole, the same thing. You know, my, originally, when I had a planner, he had to do all the minutes himself, and, so, you know, if you, if you, I'll just give one little piece of advice, I think minutes take a lot, you know, do take up a lot of time, so if you go that route and you eliminate the clerk's position, you could either do what Jamie said, kind of give it to someone that's in the building department, it's kind of a natural combination. We did that where I was planning, so they supported building and planning. Or you could just put a couple, keep a couple thousand dollars in your budget, just to cover minutes, and maybe offer someone, an existing employee or somebody part-time, a stipend just to do your minutes. 'Cause that, that does get pretty time-consuming, I think, for someone that's trying to do all the other stuff. But that's my two cents.
No, it's good advice. And I, I thank you for taking the time with us today. I'll take you up on your offer, if you could give us a list, you know, and a condensed list, a list that you think would suit this size town of the, of the bunnies that are out there, that would be very helpful at town meeting. And anything else that you think we could use, I would be more than glad to, to take to town meeting and, and kind of pitch our, our cause.
Happy to do that. It was so nice to meet all of you.
It was very nice to meet you, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jen, I'll talk to you Monday or Tuesday.
Sounds good, have a good night.
Good night. Well, we've had a lot of back and forth.
You guys are gonna have to make the decision on where you wanna go. I'll be glad to make the argument, carry the water, tell you the financial implications. As I said, you're one of the few budgets that's still open. We don't have to, I've got it on the agenda for the selectmen on the fourteenth coming up, but let me tell you, I don't think they'll get to it, because they're doing Old Colony and the Kuschnik public schools that night.
That's a big one.
You know, one, I understand the, how the minutes can be extremely time-consuming. But to get something sold, I mean, if we're not doing so much A&R, subdivision, solar array stuff-
We don't know what's coming-
No, no, we don't, but if it's combined, and there just becomes so much clerical work that not much is getting done on the planning side, then the next year, we go in for, for an increase. then the next year, we go in for, for an increase. But it would be better if we could go in looking for an increase, not in this year's budget, but the year after, if we can say, "We've had somebody here full-time. We, a fair amount of time has been spent with minutes, but he also has time to do X, Y, and Z towards receiving grants." Even if we don't get a single one, at least it's, it's an opportunity to get somebody in here with some kind of expertise. And now, if he doesn't work out, Jamie, I mean, it's gonna take somebody that's got some initiative to start going after these things. If it doesn't look like it works out after a year, are we stuck with the position forever and ever? Okay?
No, and Mark, your, your point, I'm with Rick on this, and your point is well-taken. What if that, if that, we just do exactly what Rick said, right, what I'm suggesting? And that guy goes out and gets a woman, gets out, gets a sixty thousand dollar grant. Well, hell, they almost paid for their own salary. Isn't that easy? It's so much easier to go to the next town meeting and say, "Hey, look, we're gonna get this grant, they're paying for themselves."
This guy has been only been spending-
I'm like, why are you doing it all part-time?
Just so you folks know, the cost at taking the building department clerical person and going from what they are now to a thirty-five hour full-time is ten thousand dollars.
Half of what Paul is now.
Yeah.
So if you combine the twenty thousand and the fifty-three, you'd be looking at an increase, and you kept a ten thousand dollar clerical, rough figures, and a seventy-five thousand planner, you're looking at a twelve thousand dollar increase. Hell, the school does that in Kleenex.
So, it's, again, I don't, why can't, I still don't see why some of this stuff can't be done with a part-time planner. Grant writing, you know what I mean? We don't have a whole lot of A and Rs coming in front of-
But you don't know what's coming down.
Yeah, you never know.
We got inundated.
Neither do you.
But if you're inundated, you can't turn around.
I can't, you can't-
I understand, we were anticipating, and if it never comes to fruition, what happens then?
You can't find-
You know what I mean, nothing wraps up, we don't know what's coming, however-
But I'll say this, to counter you, is if the person, I have to be, I have to have assurances that who we're hiring, it's in their job description, number one, to update the master plan, number two, to update the open space plan. Every one of those is a check-off, and that's their primary, if they're not willing to do that, "No, that's too difficult, I don't, I don't know how to do that."
No.
There's no point in doing this.
No, that should be part of the interview.
If that's their job.
That should be part of the interview process.
Doug was talking about a hundred and twenty-five, he wasn't on the board yet. He was telling me a hundred and twenty-five K, I was like, that's insanity. Update the plan so that we're eligible for grants?
And you're not finding a part-time planner. What, who's qualified? You're not finding a retiree right now.
And we're full of retirees. You get another retiree, and he gets in here for a year or two, and, and boom, he's gone. You didn't find another planner, and you're constantly going through people who are rotating door.
I'm, I'm bringing people in that are retirees for finance director and treasurer collector that I know from my past, that are coming in as consultants. But part of the deal I made with them was their juniors are being trained so that they can pass their certification exams. You don't have that situation in the planning era. Because you had people that were unqualified in a number of positions, underpaid and under, for the position, but they were unqualified, they shouldn't be in the position, and that's why you're in a lot of the jams you are now. You had four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxes that were not collected, and the town's rights were never protected. You had a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that was double billed in taxes because you had unqualified people sitting in those chairs.
So why do you think that somebody's that, that confident? That you can, that you can find a town planner, okay, just-
For this amount of money, yeah.
So basically-
I know the marketplace. The biggest problem we have with the finance right now is the, you've got a lot of junior people, and you've got a lot of people retiring. You don't have too many in the middle. With planners, you've got people with three to four years that are working for Serpide or for City of New Bedford, that this salary would be eight to ten thousand dollar raise.
How many hours a week is that?
Thirty-five.
It's only thirty-five hours. So if they do a three-hour night meeting with us?
No, it's thirty-five hours as far as that, but it's an exempt position. They are not hourly.
No, I'm not following, so if they-
They, they-
They come here and we go through a four-hour grueling meeting?
Shoot me.
They're, they're-
And they have to-
They're on salaries, so it's not by the hours, is that what you're saying?
Yep, and they have to go do an inspection at nine o'clock in the morning. They're gonna go do the inspection at nine o'clock in the morning.
What about the three hours that they spend at our meeting? Do they get to leave on Friday early?
That's up to the board that supervises them.
Okay. Yeah, but again, I mean, labor-wise, just because he's got other things he's gotta do, and he's gotta, like you said, we got a four-hour grueling meeting, we can't let him go home early because there's a whole bunch of other stuff going on.
Then that's-
How does that, how does that work out? So that time and a half becomes, they're not hourly, is it?
No, no time and a half. All right, Tuesday, I had a meeting. Last night, I had the Fed Con, tonight, I'm here.
Right, but we're talking about now, but-
That's part of my job.
Right, but what happens, what-
That's part of their job.
What becomes part of the union, but how does it, how does a, a, a department-
They're exempt.
They're exempt.
They're exempt employee. Non-exempt means you're hourly. You can be an exempt employee and be part of a union.
Okay.
And that doesn't mean that, I mean, that union hasn't even got off the ground yet. They haven't even negotiated.
We have a decision. Are we going to pursue a part-time planner? Or are we gonna pursue a full-time planner? I was slightly confused when we started talking about the clerk's pay joining with the old pay. If that happens, do we even have to go in front of town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Every year, you have to go in front. And if you remember how it's presented to town meeting, it's not like the line-line budgets that I'm dealing with. It's salaries, expenses. There are two lines that are in the warrant. What you're looking at is you're looking at salaries right now, which is seventy-three-three. And let's say you did the ten-hour clerical in the seventy-five. Then you're looking at, instead of seventy-three-three, you're looking at eighty-five thousand salaries. And you're looking at the same as last year for expenses.
Well, we could suggest that our salaries are gonna be seventy-five, an increase of fifteen hundred, but all floated to one position.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, to me, that's, that's the cleanest way to do it. You know, it's the same money, but we're going to try to do more with the planner's position than we have in the past. And part of the job description is gonna be updating the master plan, you know, and obtaining grants. And quite frankly, if it's not a motivated enough individual to show us at the end of the year that he's accomplished something that's made it, made it, made him worthwhile to the town, well, then that position disappears the next year, that's all. Or, or we hire some, or can we just hire somebody else for the same position?
Well, is that gonna go, what kind of hopes we're gonna jump through with that? I'm not, because we need a planner, again, is it full-time or is it part-time? Well, you, and I just, getting the most out of somebody is, is the trick. And again, coming up with a figure saying seventy-five thousand, again, based on what experience, or do you have a range of salary? When it goes out, when it goes out to bid and say, "Okay, we're gonna, you know, between this and this, X amount, ten or fifteen thousand dollars difference based on, based on experience." Because we make, I, I know you seem pretty confident, unless you've got somebody waiting in queue to, wanna take that position for that, for that kind of money?
I've been watching what people have been hired at that are, have three to four years' experience. And I will tell you this. Anybody who's been in government for three to four years will know what the budget is. So they will know what they wanna walk in and get.
Cut that, however, they gotta know, again, it's gonna be about, you know, their qualifications-
Yeah.
Coming in.
Oh, it's always D O Q.
Because that's, to me, that's, that's, you know, that's part of-
Well, it's part of the interview process. You come in, you interview people, and you hire them based on their qualifications.
Yes, and, and I'm, in the old days, twenty years ago, you'd have planners who were experts in subdivision and A and Rs and stuff, and you'd have planners that were expert on all this data stuff and everything else. And you could pick and choose who you, what your community needed. Nowadays, most of them, because the degrees, programs that planners go through, teach them all of that. It's not like you've got somebody who, you know, knew how to read plans. I mean, I remember thirty-five years ago, I had a planner who, his background was, he was a surveyor. And he was great at subdivision plans.
I gotta go back to what Rick had said, again, about having, you know, a list of grants that are available, because at this point, I'm not in a position to say part-time or full-time at this point, because I really don't know what's available. It's even pertains to the town. I mean, we talking grabbing a hundred thousand dollars worth of grants in over a two-year period? Or, you know, what's it gonna cost the town to get these grants?
Or even just to say, here's what, here's the potential for us to try and get. But without a planner, we're not gonna get a dime.
All right, for example, we're looking at the Slocum Street project. We've got so much money in ARPA. We've got so much money out of DOT, out of the transportation bond. We are looking at a Mass Works grant where I've got someone who helped us put it, us in the queue. We'd have to keep going and fill out all the paperwork and the data and everything else, but you've gotta go through the portal and go into the queue to get it. And they then release the queue, so you start to do the grant application. That is money that has no strings attached. The only string attached to the Mass Works is you have to be framing it in an economic development way and have a private partner with the town that someone is going to say, "I'm going to build a development here." And the town says, "All right," but they need all this infrastructure, they need drainage, they need water pipes, et cetera. And Mass Works, which is a state entity, says, "All right, through the town, we'll pay for all that part of it because it's gonna help that development in a private parcel."
But see, this person isn't gonna be just writing grants either. I mean, this person, like she, like Jennifer said, also has to keep following up on these things.
Yep.
So it's not just like a one-time deal, "Hey, I wrote it, I got it, and okay."
Oh, no, you gotta find-
You gotta keep following it.
Quarterly reports.
You have to have that person that's gonna keep following this thing.
Yep.
So it, it, it does seem like there's a lot of time, and I do like this thing about combining the two.
I do too.
It makes total sense.
And I, I just wanna throw in two quick, one quick comment. I'm a volunteer, we're all volunteers here, okay?
Yep.
We're all volunteers here. I've spent, just, just this week alone, I spent close to ten hours in these buildings. If you have a part-timer here, half of his time would be what I was doing this week.
Right.
And I wasn't writing anything. Okay, I wasn't writing a thing.
Yeah, I-
But there's business that needs to get done, there's people that need to be talked to, there's, there's things that need to get done. You're sitting down, you're making phone calls, you're doing this, you're talking to them, you're waiting for, you're reading emails. And I, and a good ten hours this week. If we had a, a part-time planner, another ten hours to do what? He's doing meeting minutes after that, or whatever.
Yeah, meeting minutes and meetings, yeah, and, and that running around, that's it.
Right. That's it, time, before you know it, your, your nineteen hours are gone. And, and all he did was maybe, you know, prepare for the next meeting, and he, and he spoke to a couple of department heads. The time is gone.
And, and we can assume that because you're doing it for free, you're not exactly hanging around with nothing.
No, I'm trying to get in and out of here. I'm trying to get in and out of here.
I, I will tell you-
Twenty-five or thirty years ago, I was doing the same thing, Mark.
No, I believe you.
And I got off the board because I just said, "No, I, I can't do this anymore. I can't spend all these out-of-meeting hours, you know, and, and making calls while I'm at work to, you know, get a legal opinion and all this other crazy stuff." It's like, no, I'm, I'm done.
I will tell you that in a two-week period, solving planning board problems have taken five to ten hours of my time, and lightly.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's a lot to it that's behind the scenes that we don't know, we don't see-
Lawyer calls are-
That are very time-consuming. He's just not, he's just not creating an agenda for us. There's a lot, and Paul, right now, is doing a lot above and beyond-
Clerical.
Clerical. Uh, I don't know if you know, Paul's leaving.
Yeah.
Paul's leaving, and, and if we don't fill a position quickly, lock the door. No business is being done. We need somebody in that office.
But are we in a position now that if we don't take Paul's salary and lump it together, we can't advertise until we get town meeting vote?
We should have, we should have money left, we have Doug's-
You've got plenty of money in the budget right now that if this board told me that they wanted me to advertise for a planner, I would do it Monday or Tuesday.
But you couldn't advertise for a planner at seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, I could.
But then, what if town meeting didn't approve the increase?
That would be the problem, that I would, I would have to tell that person, anybody you interviewed, professional ethics, I would have to tell them it's dependent on town meeting. Above and beyond the fact that all of us, other than, all of employees, other than my salary, are dependent upon town meeting, and the police chief and the fire chief's salary.
But if we, if we just increased the budget to seventy-five, and we combine the salary, that, that person is safe. But if we, if we just increased the budget to seventy-five, and we combine the salary, that, that person is safe.
That's very, this is where, I'm the town administrator, but you're the planning board, and this is your guy that, or your structure that you're talking about, and you're gonna have to decide. I will write the budget however you folks want me to. FinCom has said they believe in the value of the planner.
How soon do you think we can get that list of, of grants?
Well, she'll get it to me by next week.
Okay.
And again, um-
I mean, again, I'm, I'm also thinking about pitching it on town meeting floor. But if we go in with that list, and here's what we're trying to do.
And if that list isn't adequate or something like that, or you need more information, Jen is as much of a friend of mine, I can add it.
It doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be complicated, but it needs to be, you know, we've got three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of potential grants we can get, but we need manpower in order to develop, you know, to, to write them, to pursue them, and to implement them if we get them. But if we don't have that person, we don't even have a shot at it.
Well, not only do you not have a shot at it, there'll be stuff, there is restrictions on money you're getting now that you're supposed to have those plans in place.
So, but, I, we, we keep talking, again, we keep talking about grants, but are we eligible for any of this? Because our master plan's not even updated.
And that's part of what-
But that's why we wanna get that, bro.
Well, I, I, I get that, but it just is, I mean, we keep talking about grants and the money that's available. So how long, how long is it gonna take to develop, like just-
No, but we're, we're applying now for grants.
Yeah.
And we can tell them that a master plan is being updated. You do have a master plan, it's out of date.
Out of date, yeah.
But you, they're giving communities the benefit of the doubt right now. Five years down the road, I don't know if they will be, but right now, we're lucky and they're giving us the benefit of the doubt. But we have to show that we're actually doing it.
That's just part of the job description, you know, that, that-
So you need to get that, we need to take a look at that job description and make sure all the details are covered for what we're looking for.
Actually, you need to make sure in the interview, that the job description's one thing. A job description covers everything in the sun, so someone can't say, not my job.
Correct.
But when you do your interview, you get to ask those questions. The job description is not a roadmap of how you want that person to perform in the position.
Understood.
It's part, it's part of trying to get funding at town meeting.
Oh, I, I mean, I write job descriptions and include everything but the kitchen sink.
Who's, who does the interviews for something like this?
You guys would, I would sit in to make sure that the legalities are followed and we don't get sued. You guys figure out the questions and what's important. If you need me to help with the writing of the questions, I'm available. But it would be, you guys have to set your goals and what you want that person to do for probably the first twenty-four months.
It would be me, and then I would, I would take Jamie's assistance. I'd take your questions, your answers, and maybe even one more person from the board if need be. But to have five, six people, and with one person, I don't think it's-
You usually have a panel, an interview panel of three people.
I'm still worried about getting the money for the job. Yeah, I know, I, I, you know, they, you know, the, that part we get to, once we know what we have to work with.
Well, I mean, there's, there's, you know, you go, you ask, and then you see what happens.
So, I look at it this way, you combine-
I'd combine, I mean, for right now, I'd combine the two-
Combine the two, still show, still show fifteen hundred bucks, but that's nothing. Whatever it is. Or you can say, or two thousand, whatever it is. Or you can say you wanna increase the budget to eighty-five, and have ten for clerical, seventy-five for the salaried person, it's a twelve-thousand-dollar increase. If it gets, if, 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 you know, like the selectmen and the finance committee have issues with it, drop back down to the seventy-five and run with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm-
As a town planner, or no, no clerk, we'll just run with it and see what it goes. Probably be begging for it later, but, you know.
There's so much, there's so much work there in updating the master plan-
Yeah.
And applying for grants, that, you know, if there's not much clerical work required that month, well, you do more on, on the grants than the master plan. You know, if there's, if there's a lot of stuff going on, and, and it's more day-to-day stuff, well, then that's, that's what they work on. But I, I don't know, to me, the part-time thing, I, I've thought about it, you know, it's difficult to sell the quote, "time that you can't see." Like, you know, what, what you're talking about. And I, you've got it, you've gotta focus on, no, this is why we, we want a full-time guy, and here's what we're going to pursue. And then hopefully, at the end of the year, you can actually show some results and decide whether you wanna keep that full-time position or, or, or not.
Yep.
Or, or add some clerical time, you know. But I, I do like the, the idea of going in with seventy-five plus ten for the, the clerical stuff. And it's a small increase, it'll give us some money to try and attract somebody so we can go after some of these funds, at, at some, at some rate.
Right.
You know.
Yep. And that person's gonna have to, uh, work for their raise. And if that person comes in and is good-
Yeah.
And is getting money, results, and money into the town and, and doing the master, and everybody's like, hey, you know, I need more hours. But if you're getting results, then you go back to the town and say, hey, we need a little bit of raise, we need this, we need that. But you gotta start somewhere.
Gotta get the ball going.
You gotta get the ball rolling. We gotta get the master plan rolling, and, and you gotta get things, we can't just, we're stagnant. And we're, we're not going anywhere, the town isn't producing any more money, we're, we're maxed on taxes, we need, we need-
And, and, and if it gets to the point, well, we're, we're really asking for the difference between seventy and seventy-five, we're just trying to get somebody that's good.
That's qualified, that's good, yeah.
And we'll stick around.
My biggest sticking point on, on moving to the seventy-five figure and the highest salary, and I'm gonna be honest with you, was, is, it was Doug, because Doug made it seem like to me that a town planner can't do the master plan. But I think it was more of, he did not have the experience-
Experience, too, right.
Yeah, the knowledge or the experience.
All the knowledge, all the experience, and the biggest, you know, to me, you know, what we're talking about tonight with Jen, and that this person is going to do something, all those plans that we're talking about, a hundred-twenty, and Doug was talking about a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar figure to farm out. And to me, it, it pays for itself.
Just on that one thing?
Yes.
Just on that one thing?
To get those plans done in the next two years, it, it pays for itself, never mind bringing in Instagram.
Right, just the one thing.
I'm sold on it.
But, but I gotta add, like you had said, if he's working on the master plan, but he has to sub out to get information here, has to sub out a little bit, there's gonna be some cost to this.
I've got some money there.
Okay. As long as it's not, you know, as long as, you know, down the line, he's like, hey, I need money for this, fifty grand. Yeah, no, I'm gonna need a couple of bucks for this, I need some money for this, I need some money for that.
If he likes the grant money instead of an, an increase in salary to the selectmen, you know, then, then he's made his, he's made his salary right there.
If you need twenty-thousand dollars for a study, a traffic study and a transportation study, it's there.
Okay. All right, uh, do we need to make a motion and take a vote on this?
You just need to tell me what to do.
Can I get a verbal on yea or nay, on your opinion on going forward with the full-time planner? Let's go, if it's okay, again, yea or nay, whether we wanna do the seventy-five plus the ten and the-
I think that's a great idea, myself, the seventy-five plus the ten, and at least get it started.
Right.
And if it, and if it dies, well, then we'll have to work with, work with it after that. But, yeah, seventy-five plus ten, I mean, that seems perfectly manageable. I mean, we're only talking about ten or fifteen thousand dollars more than what's in our budget right now.
Right, right, which isn't very much.
Right.
This isn't very much in the big picture, that's why this is sometimes confusing me. I, in my personal opinion, the twenty-two that we originally asked for, I think is very much, but it seems to be a lot for a lot of people. It seems to be a lot for some people, but I'm just kinda blown away that people are, you know, really, you know, upset about the twenty-two thousand, but-
Yeah, I'm, I'm sitting there with the thirty-four million dollars.
Yeah, I'm like, twenty-two grand, really?
I, I can-
And I'm worried, I, I'm worried about the health insurance going from a million-six to two-point-two million.
I remember one time, it was probably close to forty years ago, I was at town meeting, and I watched that whole meeting stop.
Your fifty-three thousand is healthcare pensions.
In the police cars.
Again, I, you know, I-
But it was over half an hour of discussion.
Health insurance and pensions, what happens then?
Yes.
Yeah, I was, you gotta hire a professional like me to pull rabbits out of the hat.
My, my attitude was, if I need a cop, I want him cool-come, correct-of-issues, not to-
Can we get a, a yea or nay on, on that motion?
I, I would, I'm, I'm all for a seventy-five plus ten.
Yeah, me too.
I'm with that.
I'm not quite soldiership, just because-
I'm good with it, uh, that's four out of five, uh, that's the majority.
If you wanna, uh, come and see me and talk about it.
Yeah, wait, I got some, I got some further questions to ask, to look at towns with-
To what, zero?
Well, I mean, to seventy-five instead of eighty-five, you know, I mean, that's what I, I need to see.
I mean, that could be done on the floor, but-
All right.
Mind-boggling.
I know. Don't, don't forget why, what they're getting paid and what they're doing for their salary, I guess, is probably, I mean, I, I just don't know if we're, we're looking at a pipe dream or trying to get somebody for that kinda money to do that type of work, that's all.
You're gonna, you're gonna get-
I'm gonna be with Mr. Kelly, I don't know if you're available tomorrow, but, one day next week?
Half-day tomorrow, and then I've got medical in the afternoon that- trying to sell me on the various methods of getting rid of this and being able to walk.
Mr. Kelly, thank you so much for coming in. I appreciate all your time, I appreciate your efforts and all your information.
Thank you.
Anybody, I, I know a couple, a couple of you have already come in the office, but anybody else who wants to, the door is open.
If it's, if it's a need, you, I've had a lot of, I've had a lot of positive feedback from Boston sports in Denver.
That's what I wanna see.
That's where they, they work on the athletes there.
Oh, I go to, I go to, uh-
If you get somebody to do everything, we wanna do it.
I go right up to Foxborough.
So we just give up on that, or?
Yeah.
I'm not saying give up on it, just allow him.
You gotta follow ahead and go for it, and then you do what you can.
If you take huge buildings and craft, you'll suffer the Patriots.
And you're gonna become-
That's where you wanna go. Whoever, whoever takes care of the athletes, that's where you wanna go.
Both his knees done, and a clerk.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good night, thanks, Jamie, for, uh, told the doc he's only doing it once.
All right. Gentlemen, let's, let's try to move this along. Two days ago, if you all recall, Park Drive, Sin Karfa, the solar project on Park Drive. Okay, so we got this email to us two days ago. To be honest with you, I don't even know exactly what they're looking for or what they want. They have made a few modifications. This is the original plan here, if you wanna look, they're really, the only thing that's here is like a tree removal, the fencing, the, the post-fencing, and the construction, um, part of it. I have asked Paul to reach out to town council, because if you recall correctly, and, and please, anybody, correct me if I'm wrong, there was, there's a forty-foot entrance, Mr. Moran, I think his name was, on the left-hand side, facing the driveway, Mr. Moran on the left-hand side, wasn't, which owns fifty percent of that paper street, wasn't allowing, uh, wasn't allowing for the usage of his half of the road. So then, Sin Karfa wanted to come in and do a twenty-foot access road. They went out, they staked it, there was one or two trees that had to come down. If I recall correctly, and this is what I need town council's clarification on, because this was back in September, and again, a lot's happened since then, there was a piece of property, the neighbor on the right, I'm sorry, I forget their name, the neighbor on the right had their property staked out, and their stakes landed here. Sin Karfa had their engineers out there staking out, and their stakes landed here. There was a-
There's a discrepancy in the-
There was a discrepancy on the property. That's what I'm waiting for town council to let me know how to proceed regarding that piece of property, piece of land.
This post-construction entrance that they show, shows all the trees gone?
Maybe they did, I think the only, but if you read here, it's hard to read, it's only the one tree that they're taking out, is this one. Maybe they just didn't, because that's on the other person's property, their property line is actually that, they can't-
Well, just that I thought a lot of the issue was, they were gonna damage the roots on these trees trying to get in there.
Looks like they're gonna raise the grade, taxes to avoid-
They're gonna raise it to avoid digging out the root system.
Okay.
And then they were gonna put a construction fence on either side.
Oh, it's construction, shows them all gone, all right?
Yeah, I'm assuming that's just a, a typo, is what I'm assuming. There's no way, they're not gonna take out the trees, I mean, that's a, they can't, that's on the other person's property. I'm assuming that's just... But then again, nobody's here to discuss this with us.
Yep.
I also need to go, and also would like to, the fire chief to, to look at this and see what he thinks about the six, it's actually twenty feet, but with the shoulder, you're looking at about sixteen feet. So I need the fire chief to look at it and, and kinda give me his thoughts. I need to bring our new building inspector up to speed on this and get his, uh, thoughts on it, and then town council. So, there's still quite a bit that needs to get done with this, they sentenced this, um-
I mean, to, to be honest with you, I mean, for construction purposes, they ought to be able to use a sixteen-foot wide road. I mean, you don't need two-way traffic, you know, the one truck waits at one end, you know, for the other one to get through if necessary. It's all construction to me, because once these things are in place, there's little or no traffic that goes in and out.
Very little to no traffic.
Yeah.
It's about fires, fire apparatus, really, it's what it comes down, you know, you gotta get back there, so.
Yeah, I think they can get through, the sixteen feet will allow somebody to get through, and as long as there's a type of turnaround in there for them to come back out, then, I don't know, you know, obviously, it's up to the fire chief to, to give his recommendations on it.
Doesn't show anything beyond what we got, so he'll be lucky, so it'll be on him, so.
Right.
I mean, I mean, the other part of this too is, you know, I, I know that the neighbors don't really want the thing to go back there, but if, if you've got a piece of property that goes out to Park Drive, and you, you should have, it seems like you should have the right to access your parcel in the back for some reason or other, whatever it may be. What good does it do to have this little mech that got left down to Park Drive if you can't use it to access your property in the back? It just, I, I, the legalities aside, I, I don't see how you could take that away from somebody, because then the property now becomes landlocked and useless, you can't get to it. Yeah, and, and I, I mean, I'm not, at this point, I mean, I'm not willing to expose the town to a lawsuit if we say they can't access their property in the back, unless the fire chief has got, you know, a legitimate reason, you know, public safety trumps everything, but it's-
And, and I need clarification, we as a board need clarification on that piece of property, that piece of, that three-to-five-foot piece of property, that, who's, who does it belong to? And right now, we have a stamp set of engineered plans that they say they own it. Well, the other person needs a stamp set of plans that says that they own it, and, and I need the council to-
If there's enough, if there's enough of the discrepancy, it might have to go to land court. Land court to, to settle it.
Right.
If there really is, you know, I, it, was it a registered surveyor that laid out the, the neighbor's line? Or did he just go put some poles in the ground?
That's the thing, we don't have a set of plans that have been stamped by a registered surveyor.
And we've got one set of plans- And we've got one set of plans stamped by a registered surveyor that shows they've got twenty feet to put this sixteen-foot wide way in.
Exactly.
Somewhere.
Exactly.
Somewhere on earth.
So, I just, I just wanted to bring this for quick discussion, just to let you know that this is kind of...
I'm glad that we've got it, at least now we can be a little bit better prepared when they come.
This has become a public hearing?
That's also another question that we had back in September, sent this to, because they already had a public hearing on this, they already have a special permit for this overfield?
Right.
Town council ruled that they had to amend the permit.
So, if town council ruled that they have to amend the permit, then they have to send out the abutty's notice and we have to do another public hearing?
Yes, and they were on the verge of like doing it and then they pulled the plug and started looking at other avenues.
That's right.
Because they were ready to, and remember, they came to talk about it?
Yeah.
And then they have details that they did everything we talked about, putting up temporary fencing to contain dust.
Yeah.
That's what they're gonna do on both sides.
Yeah.
And then when they're done, they're gonna put up a vinyl fence. I think it's on both sides, I'm not...
I think it's on one side, I think it's on his side.
Looks like it's on both.
No, it's gotta be on this guy's side.
No, because he doesn't, they don't abut him, his property line is there.
Right, it looks like I'm seeing...
I think it's gonna be on this side.
No, I think he owns the center line of the way by fee interest, that's what, that's what the issue was.
Oh, no, right here, it says both, permanent fence, six, on both sides.
The one thing I see here is though, they're raising the grade up, which is good to avoid the root system. But you can't, you're not gonna retain that ten inches of stone with straw wattle. No? That's not gonna happen. Otherwise, they need curving on both sides of that ten-inch grade race.
So, I mean, you said the fire chief's gonna weigh in, but my concern is, this is, this is one massive...
It's a big...
Okay, so is this even, this one, if there were to be a fire, is that gonna be, that one entrance gonna be manageable, or are they gonna have, they're gonna right away coming in from the other side at some point?
I think the fire chief changed too in the middle of...
Yes.
I want to say that Kevin, you know, when you retired.
Yeah. Yeah, he scattered it.
I don't know, is it Tommy Fallon's the chief, so he's...
Yeah, he's a little guy.
But they should be, they submitted this, I assume, or what, they want to...
I'm assuming they're gonna, yes, they do want to schedule a public hearing. Paul replied to them, because first they wanted a public hearing and we didn't have any paperwork, then they sent us this. So I'm assuming they're gonna do, it won't be at the next meeting, because I think it's gonna be up in two weeks, so I'm thinking it'll be at the next meeting, because Paul's off tomorrow. So I think it'll be the following meeting, which...
Yeah, it has to be a month later, right?
Yeah, so we're looking at the first and second meeting of April. So, that'll give us some time. I have both load of paperwork here that I started reading through, these are all the emails from back in August and September. These are our town council's responses that I started reading through, but it was given to me today and I didn't get a chance to finish it. So this gives us more time to kind of look at what was discussed and talked about back in August and September. So when they come in front of us in a month or so and they present their new set of plans, hopefully, we'll have some answers from town council, fire chief, building inspector, and then we can move forward and put this one to bed, one way or another.
And the amendment is only for this stretch of the entrance, we're not revisiting?
No, we're not revisiting anything with the solar field, that's already been done. And they've been approved and a special permit is been approved for that, for that. We just have an issue with the entrance, that's what we have to do. Right away, right away, the entrance to the solar field. Gentlemen, we've had a good meeting. Is there any other business anybody wishes to discuss?
Just, maybe even at the next meeting, do we have any update on Five-Fifty Main? What's going on out there?
Five-Fifty Main has been very quiet, Five-Fifty Main is dealing with conservation. Five-Fifty Main has been very quiet. I will say that Nexamp, which is the Ten-Fifty Main, Ten-Fifty Two, Cushing, Robinson Road, all of those, they're very eager, they're wanting building permits, they're wanting a lot. Unfortunately, they're dealing with wetlands that were found on Cushing Lane that is now gonna become an issue for that particular site. And they still haven't finalized sureties for decommissioning. So, they still need to work out the sureties for decommissioning before our building inspector will give them a building permit.
All right, thank you. When you say Cushing Lane, is it the one on the corner of Robinson Road or at the end of Cushing Lane?
At the end, yeah.
At the end, okay, all right.
And that one happens to be an entrance to one behind it.
Yes.
And they're asking to be able to access so they can start, as you can see, they've already started on Ten-Fifty, the driveway going up the access road.
Stop it real quick because it flooded right out.
They got stuck, I seen them in the end, stuck.
So, they're dealing with that.
Go, go to old farmland.
Yeah, that foot and a half of farm loam is great to drive on. You see how much storm they've drawn in the last couple of days, trying to bring that thing up.
Everybody, the next meeting is Thursday, March twenty-third. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.